I call the Order of November 22, 2017 Business Meeting and would ask Don to please take the role.
Well, good morning Commissioners and happy day before Thanksgiving. I hope you all have great holiday plans. Representing County Council this morning is Mr. Chris Story and we have Mary Rathke serving as your clerk to the board. And I'll start with a roll with Commissioner Humberson.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in applying to allegiance. Apply allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I'm going to announce that the Board will recess. That was a short meeting. As the Board of County Commissioner and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. With that, I'd like to introduce the Housing Authority Commissioner Paul Reynolds.
Thank you.
Probably didn't know there were six of us. Anyway, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Wait, I, oh yeah, I'm supposed to ask you to read it.
Yeah. Housing Authority Consent Agenda, Resolution 1922, Approval to Submit a Section 18 Disposition, Disposition Application for the Sale of the Oregon City View Manor. Resolution 1923, Authorizing the Issuance of Up to $32 Million of Revenue Bonds for the Rosewood Terrace Apartments Project. And Resolution 1924, Authorizing the Execution, Acknowledgement and Delivery of Transaction Documents for the Rosewood Terrace Apartments Project. And that concludes the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Do any members of the Commission wish to remove an item for discussion? Yes?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't wish to remove an item, but I wish to comment on one.
Okay.
Bravely. As I pointed out yesterday in our discussions on our housing issues here in Clackamas County, I made the point that at $15 an hour, which is significantly above minimum wage, a person makes about $31,000 a year on a full year's salary. If you take taxes out and everything and you get down to what a normal housing cost should be, including rent and utilities, it comes out to around $800 a month. And I just want to make the point, if you look at item number two, the Resolution 1923, that subsidized government housing that we are working on starts at $761 a month for a one-bedroom, one-bath. So, the idea that private enterprise is going to be able to build the housing that we need for low-income folks, that's going to be a pretty big lift. And I just think we need to be aware that while government can put some Band-Aids on the most needy problem, let's, let's, let's remember that in the final analysis, if it's, if housing is really going to work for people, people have to be working at jobs that make a decent living. And at this point, too many people are working at jobs that make barely above minimum wage, let alone even $15 an hour. Had minimum wage kept pace with CEO compensation over the last 30 years, minimum wage would be about $23 an hour. That would allow somebody to actually either buy or rent a home without having to have government assistance. So, in the final analysis, the real solution to our housing problem is people making a decent living. And right now, we've built an economy for people to make as little as possible, while corporations make as much as possible. And that's an imbalance that has to be addressed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I propose that we remove Resolution 122 from the consent agenda. And that is the item that is the approval to submit a Section 18 Disposition Application for the Sale of the Oregon City View Manor. I have toured the site. I agree that the property needs to be replaced and we need to find a solution. My concern is that we are doing this without a, the support of our federal delegation at this time. Commissioner Humberson and I were back in DC just pretty recently, was it six weeks ago? We were back, two months ago?
Something like that. You lose track of time.
I know, we lose track of time. We were back there in...
In the summer.
Yeah. Well, no, September, mid-September. And there were, our federal delegation was getting different concerns than, or additional concerns that, that, to their process. And so, I understand that we are going with our federal delegation, that our public affairs, next week to get their support for a letter of support for this. And what I would like to, I don't know if I can, if I can abstain from this vote at this time and change my vote after we have that letter of support, is that possible?
See, why not?
Well, if the matter would come up again, you could change your vote. But if you're separating it from the consent agenda, you would have a separate vote. If it's on the consent agenda, you'd be voting on the entire item. And if you abstain from the singular vote, the matter would have to come up again for you to have the opportunity to change your vote. You could announce that at a, it could be revisited at a subsequent public hearing if you like.
Okay.
So, this isn't the last time it'll come forward, is it? Why don't, do you want to come up and...
So, I just have, while Chuck's coming up, I just have a procedural question. So, if the point is to, and this is something Chuck really doesn't answer per se, maybe he does. But if the point is to actually have the vote be, Commissioner Fisher's vote be effective, and, but not today, then really, what we're really saying is that can the vote, is the vote important to be done today? As opposed to deferred, until you feel more comfortable? The question is, is that, is that a possibility or not? Because once the vote's taken and the action's taken, then, then changing the vote is not really effective. We're authorizing it today or we're not. So, I ask, my question is, do we need to authorize it today and can we defer it? It's probably the most appropriate approach.
So, my name's Chuck Robbins. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County.
Richard Swift, the Director of Health Housing Human Services for Clackamas County. So, you know, the process regarding Oregon City View Manor is going to be a long one. So, when we actually submit our application to HUD, we will actually then go into a process and negotiations with Housing and Urban Development. So, this is going to be a long process. And so, this vote today is essentially asking the Board to allow us to begin that process. And it won't trigger any immediate sales. I mean, there is an enormous amount of work to do. And so, what this vote does is allow us to, it gives us the green light to begin that process. And we actually do need that green light to start this. So, and we do have the, we have a meeting on Wednesday with our Congressional delegation. They are going to be coming with us to tour the site and have a conversation about how we are working with residents, what our plans are for residents, you know. I know that the Oregonian article has caused some consternation. I think it would be accurate to say that I was in disagreement with the Oregonian in terms of how they characterized what we were trying to do with Oregon City View Manor. They are correct, and I agree with them in the sense that we are in a housing crisis. However, our process for disposal of this property is not about raking in dollars, as they, I will quote them, "It is about creating new housing." Housing at Oregon City View Manor, my sense of it is probably, we got about five years left on these before, we're not going to, we just will not be able to even remotely keep up with the maintenance. And, and their characterization of the rental assistance program as something that is going to allow us to bring money in and attract developers to help with maintenance and roof replacement, I don't know how many developers are going to want to invest money in roofs. There's, I can't see where the return on dollars is. And we are, I am increasingly nervous about our basic infrastructure for Oregon City View Manor. You know, we experienced two failures in sewer over the weekend. We had to vacate both residences. We have to bring in hazmat. And, you know, I don't know what the benchmark is for sewer, sewer failures in units before they're rendered uninhabitable. And we will see more of these. You know, our sewers don't have any backflow guards. So, if there's any backup in the Oregon city system, the residents pay for this. And there's no way for us to go in and dig this up without causing. We would have to actually remove residents if we were going to do this type of replacement. It's massive. It would be the entire sewage system for all residents, which would in turn require us to move them. So, Oregon City View Manor, the clock is ticking on two areas, in terms of our ability to maintain this and our conversations with HUD. And so, I'm asking the Board to greenlight our process to start. This is not anything where we are going to be selling immediately. This will be a long and arduous journey. This is not going to be easy.
Because one of the, one of the important parts is you have to find places for these people to live.
That is correct.
And I just want to mention that I attended the community meeting. And at first, there was some fear. But as we went through the process and the voucher process, everyone would receive a voucher. They would be able to find a place. And there were a number of people who actually wanted to move out of state. And this voucher actually gave them the ability to do that. Because it's, you can use it anywhere in the United States. And then by the end of the meeting, I felt that everyone felt comfortable with moving forward. And, and that's why I support it. If I didn't feel that those, these folks would be taken care of, I wouldn't be moving forward either. But I felt really comfortable. And all we're saying today is apply. That's basically what we're talking about today. Please, apply.
I mean, the reality is, at Oregon City View Manor with our residents, that the, one roadblock we may experience, and I don't, and here's one, another point I don't disagree with the Oregon article of, I think it was the 12th, which is, we will be going through relocation process with our residents. And that process may be slow related to the availability of places to relocate people. And, I mean, we already have had actually some folks express interest. A couple of them, I think one person in particular moving, you know, is going to move out of state to go be with family. This is an opportunity for them to relocate and be closer to family, I forget what state. So...
Florida. It was Florida.
Okay, well, Florida. So, their relocation is, you know, so they're, they're biting the whole chunk of the country. But we will not be, you know, selling and engaging in construction without every single resident having been taken care of. So, that will be actually, you know, our potential biggest roadblock. That's our commitment. We will not do anything until we have satisfactory relocated every single resident. And, you know, we've looked at that, we've been looking at, you know, across the country, when housing authorities across the country engage in these types of relocations, what happens to residents typically? And typically, less than, I believe, 20% seek to be relocated back to the, to the place they had been originally, they had been relocated from. So, people settle, resettle fairly quickly. And, but we will be making every effort once we are done with, you know, these projects. And these projects are probably, when we get right down to it, we're looking at eight-to-nine-year time span in terms of total completion for everything we're planning on doing with all of our properties. More than likely, some folks, maybe they want to be relocated back up to Holcomb Road. We'll see. And the other piece about the OCVM is, you know, this property is a difficult build for high density just because of the rolling terrain. You'd have to do significant changes to soil. You'd be doing, coming in and doing major, you know, excavation in order to make something in terms of high density work up there. Which would also necessitate for us then, you know, changes in road, changes in basic infrastructure, utility pools. Oregon City's going to require us to take a look at roads. And they have certainly expressed an interest in working with us at, in Clackamas Heights to do something and, and to help us with that type of utility pool, with that type of re-engineering of basic infrastructure, i.e. roads. So, this is, this is a major, this is a major project.
Okay, so, Paul, and then you, is that okay?
Paul ReWalter?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, before the meeting started, I asked Mr. Reynolds, Commissioner Reynolds, if he was aware of the Oregonian article, and apparently he was not. I said, "Well, please check with Chuck," and Chuck would inform you of, well, number one, the first article that came out, and then the subsequent article from the editorial piece, the two articles.
Absolutely.
So, to his disadvantage, he probably doesn't understand the sensitivity of this. So, and I share the concerns that Commissioner Fisher has, and I expressed this yesterday. And these are, these three items are somewhat tied together in a way, right? Because the idea was that we would, anyone who is displaced from this site in the future, ideally, can be potentially relocated at their choosing to the road, to this Pedcor Rosewood project here, which is item what? Item one, actually it's item two and three. So, the, how many residents do we have at, at the Oregon City site today?
So, Oregon City View Manor, there's 100 households, 222 individuals currently live there.
So, we would assume it's 100 households?
100 households.
So, conceivably, the, the Rosewood project's 220, right?
212.
212. So, it's not quite meeting our four-to-one objective. But the phasing, the timing, is the timing such that we are relatively confident, or not, that this application that you want to submit to the feds for, you know, the disposition of the site in Oregon City will be accommodated by the Rosewood site? Or do we, we really feel that, the, I think the, the salient point, Commissioner Fisher, is that we're concerned about displacing those people, right? So, are we 100% confident that we can accommodate those people and not displace them?
So, I'm 100% confident that we will find a place for every household at Oregon City View Manor. You know, you know, where they want to live, that's why we have a relocation consultant. You know, they meet with all of the, the residents. Got a little bit of statistics here, shows that, you know, only 17% of the residents that she's interviewed, you know, really want to stay in public housing. The rest of them, 48% want vouchers. They want to be able to move out. The, the balance, they're, you know, they says, "Give me both options and I'll, you know, and I'll see what's available." So, I, you know, I think that, you know, that, and that's pretty consistent with what we're seeing, is that, and this is extremely, you know, consistent with our development objectives, which was increase the option opportunities for all of our low-income residents. Not say that you all have to live in Oregon City because that's the only property that we have, but give them opportunities to live other places.
Well, and to my other point, let me ask, I'll just say this a little bit differently. I mean, a question that is, my concern is that, and we've learned this from doing the homeless count, is that some people, they're comfortable where they grew up, right? And they may not, some people that on the Holcomb site or in Oregon City may not want to live where this Rosewood facility is. So, and they certainly have a choice. So, do we have any, any polling or any suggestion that how many people are actually willing to actually relocate from, to a different area versus stay potentially at this particular site? Because I, again, I, I share the concerns and, and, but people have a choice. And if they choose to stay there and that housing's gone, what are their choices?
Well, remember, the, the portfolio of the Housing Authority is made up of 545 public housing units and about 1,600 vouchers. You know, should this project be successful, we're going to end up with, you know, 445 housing units and 1,700 vouchers. So, that voucher, you know, is, is what we will use to help these families find a place where they want to live. To answer your question partly, is we've got six of the households that we interviewed had school-aged children who prefer to stay in their school districts. So, I think that, you know, that's Oregon City. And we've had conversations with Oregon City School District. And basically, they say, "If you live in Oregon City, you can continue to go to Holcomb Elementary if that's the school that you want to go to." So, you know, that's not a, you know, that's just a little bit of a picture there. But I think that, you know, what we're seeing is people want the options. And, you know, the 100 units, this is, this is short-term. I mean, that we're, you know, we're talking about, you know, a chicken and egg kind of a thing, you know. In order to build housing, we have to have money. In order to have money, we have to sell property because that's the only asset we have, which then impacts households which have to be relocated, which need new households, you know, new housing units, to which we need to have money to build the housing. So, we've got this vicious circle. So, you know, what we've said is, this is where we start. And we have quite a few plans, you know, being developed for housing. I think as Rich mentioned, Oregon City View Manor is not an ideal location, you know, for this population. There's very little services there. It is zoned low-density, you know, 3.5, so 3,500 square foot minimum lots. That generally means you get about 10, you know, units per acre. Given the slope, we're probably talking about seven to, you know, six to seven units per acre. However, down the street, we have property at Clackamas Heights. That's an area we're really interested in redeveloping. The city is very interested in seeing increased density there. But there's going to take time because we need to go through a planning process, bring in all the stakeholders. You know, we're, we're also looking at not selling all of the 22 acres at Oregon City View Manor. You know, we're looking at, you know, we have to sell it all because that's the application. But we've broken it up in the application to sell some of it to a, a for-profit, you know, on the market, whoever wants it. So, that's just fair mo, you know, that's just market rate that we'll be selling at. Three to five acres, you know, we're looking to sell to a nonprofit developer so that we can build some units back. You know, we're kind of, you know, cherry-picking the, the flattest property so that we can try to build the most units up there.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just going to end with, I'll just say this last thing on that. And as there, there's, you know, there's dignity in having housing, there's dignity in having choice. And, you know, I recently wrote an article, I'm not here to talk about the article, but the point of the article really was about, really, people choose to live in an environment or an area they choose to live in, right? I live in Oregon. I live in a suburban area, somewhat, I won't say rural, but it's not, it's not really urban. And there's a lot of people that are being pressured by a lot of, a different urban environment where it's higher density and it's more metropolitan-like, right? So, the Holcomb site is quite different than the Fuller Road site. Those are two different distinct areas. So, if they don't have a choice, now, we might think it's not the best site for a housing, right? But that's, that's our...
Absolutely.
That's our thinking. It's not their choice. So, I think this really gets back to, to choice, style of living and where people want to live, schools or whatever it may be, whatever they like about that area. So, my question is, have we actually polled these, these folks to actually find out where they do want to live? Are they happy there or are they willing to move to Fuller Road?
I don't have an answer to that, but I, you know, that is something that we can, can look into.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I did want to offer one key observation. And that is, is given the age and condition of the housing units that we're talking about and the limitations we have with respect to funding from HUD, to maintain and care for that particular stock of housing, I think we are on an inevitable trajectory where these current housing units will not remain in a position to be habitable for the households that currently occupy them. And we need to move forward with, with a strategy and a plan to be able to find these households, these individuals and families, suitable housing, convenient, comfortable, suitable housing, so, so they, they can make sure that their family business and lives can continue. I, it's unfortunate. I, I think, and I, what I hear Commissioner Fisher concerned about is the question about where the Congressional delegation might, might be on this particular issue. And my suggestion is, is that what we really need to do is to provide to them an affirmative commitment as to our resolve with respect to our interest in solving this problem here. It's unfortunate that the, the editorial in the paper said some of the things that it said. So, for example, it, it talked about the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program as a conceivable option. And we examined that, that option. And it doesn't provide a suitable alternative. And in fact, I mean, what we realized is that the, the approach that we're pursuing is one that involves being able to provide the residents and households there fully-funded Section 8 vouchers. But the RAD program that the editorial was championing, that we pursue, would provide less than 50% of the Section 8 value there. So, there was a sort of fundamental misunderstanding. Mr. Robbins had actually invited the reporter working on behalf of the editorial board to come on up and visit the property, take a look at the physical conditions of the units that were there. And that was not an offer that was taken up in, in advance of being able to put together some sort of reflection in the editorial column. And that's unfortunate. We have scheduled for next week, time to sit down with staff representing the various members of our Congressional delegation. They're going to be going up and taking a look at the site directly. I am confident that when they get a chance to see what it is we're trying to deal with there to provide people with suitable, safe, comfortable, convenient housing with the current housing units, that, that they will understand why it is we're pursuing this application at this time.
So, one question I have, which may resolve my concern, is if our Congressional delegation has certain suggestions in order to have their support, could we change our application? I think what's important to me is that we work in partnership with our Congressional delegation. And it's not so much, it's not the editorial that brought these questions to mind. It was being back in Washington DC. And constituencies were calling our Congressional leaders, and I had heard about that, those challenges. So, whatever those issues are that were brought to Congressman Schrader, Senator Wyden, Senator Merkley, I would like to have that, have us take that into consideration and fold that into our application so that we are working in partnership with our Congressional delegation. If that, if we can make this vote, a caveat on that, if we can adapt it. And I, there's so many things I like about this since I've been part of the Commission. I like that we're going to keep part of it and put affordable units on it, on the land, because that does give, does give people the choice to come back. I really appreciate the relocation services, the assistance with helping people move. I think that we're being very thoughtful with how we're moving forward. But that one piece is I want us to be aligned, these are federal dollars that we will be accessing. We, I think we need to do it in partnership and in alliance with our Congressional delegation.
To answer your question, at this point, we're open to any suggestions that are going to help us move forward on this. And so, if the delegation and the staff have suggestions for how we can adjust the application, we're absolutely open to that.
Okay, then I'm good with moving forward with that, with that. I don't know how we... I don't know how we need to do it procedurally, but.
Withdraw your motion, that's all you have to do.
You had a request to remove the item from the consent agenda. If you, you can, but you didn't make, you didn't, you didn't make a, a motion. It's at the discretion of the chair to remove an item from the consent agenda or not.
Okay, well, I'm going to approve this with, as long as we have that understanding that we can adjust, that we give H3S and our Housing Authority, actually, I guess it's Commissioner Reynolds there, Chuck Robbins, authority to adjust the application to receive that support.
Try to address their concerns. Okay, and Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I want to thank you for all your hard work. I actually really believe we need to move forward today. I think that editorial was probably one of the most irresponsible editorials I've ever read because it's obvious what we're trying to do. And I actually don't think we should be influenced of governance by newspaper articles. Now, I know you're not supposed to get into a war with the folks that have barrels of ink. I understand that, I've been doing this for quite a while. However, I don't think they understand the process. I think our administrator pointed out, they certainly don't have a handle on the specifics of how one works with HUD. And when we're in the middle of a housing crisis, when you have that kind of irresponsible newspaper reporting, it doesn't help anyone. I have walked door to door in the area that we are proposing to work with, get people better housing. It is substandard. And by God, if there are sewer failures, I don't want to wait another minute getting people out of there. That is a public health issue. And for a newspaper to not even acknowledge that there's a public health issue with having people live in substandard housing, when we have a plan to relocate them and have the process set for it is absolutely remarkable to me. I hope they hear this. I hope they call us back and I hope they actually get a sense of what the true issue is and that this county is leading the way on affordable housing, not just in Clackamas, but throughout the state of Oregon. And if they take the time to listen and if they take the time to understand, they would be fully aware of that. So, that's exactly how I feel about it. I understand we want our federal delegation, I'm a little bit close to some aspects of Congress and frankly, that'd be dice, but I don't care about that either. But that's just me, okay? Just saying.
Not too worried about that, are we? Say, not too worried about that, are we?
No, absolutely, absolutely not. So, Commissioner, if it makes you feel more importantly, I understand that for me, it's not an issue. But I do think we need to move forward today. And if the Oregonian wants to call me, they certainly can. Good luck with that.
So, I, I want to say some stuff, and then Paul does. One thing is, is that what we know for a fact now is that what we're doing is not working, right? It's not working. We got people living in the streets because they can't find a place to live. Here is an opportunity to do something different. And the other thing is those people living in those homes don't have vouchers, right?
That is correct.
So, now, they have a choice. They have, with a voucher, they have a choice. There are people who come to Oregon thinking they're going to have a job. They end up in these, in these housing units and they can't leave. They're stuck. The voucher gives them the ability to go back home. It's, and we're paying for relocation services. I, this is the best idea I've seen in the nine years I've been here. And so, I'm thrilled and frankly, I don't care what the newspaper says either. I talked to the reporter for about 45 minutes. And their concern was why I didn't have affordable housing units in the land I sold. What business are theirs is that what I do personally is a public issue. So, I, I, you know, I don't care either. And I also agree with Martha about the, the, I'd love to have congressional support. But this is, what have they done to solve housing? What have they done? How much money have we got from the federal government? We can't even afford to put a roof on the place. If they really want to help, turn Congress around and help us build affordable housing. And so, I'm, I want to move forward on this too and I'm excited. And I have personally met these people. I have knocked on the doors like Martha did. I've been in the units, so I know what they're like. There's no, there's no concern on my part that this is the right thing to do. So, and I think that because the other piece is flatter, there's a lot more opportunity down there. This is valuable land. People like to live on hills and pay a lot of money for it. Go up to Mount Scott and stuff and take a look around and you'll see that that's true. And that's great. Thanks to them, we can afford to put people in a place they choose to live.
Paul?
Yeah. Well, we've covered a lot of territory here, so I want to make sure that my comments are navigating through some of the areas that I really don't want to get into, but.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think it's really clear that we are all, and I know that all my colleagues are really passionate and concerned about people that are, you know, housed, how they're housed, their health situation, those that are unhoused, homeless, houseless. So, we all really care about this, there's, there's no doubt. I, I trust it. But there are a couple of things I want to, one, I want to ask one question, I want to comment after that. Just quickly, the, the sewer issue that we had just recently, that was from a sewer backup of Oregon City that caused these homes to.
That's correct. It was a sewer main owned by the city of Oregon City, clogged and backed up into our units. We happen to have a maintenance person there take care of that. And the city is assuming responsibility for that.
Now, this has happened before in Oregon City to even some brand-new homes. So, it was here just a few years ago and on some relatively new homes. And they were forced to leave the premises until they rebuilt it. So, regardless of the condition of the home, I just want to clearly state so that we're not misinformed or, or sending a signal out there that, that it was the cause, that the cause was the cause, not the, the condition of the housing itself. So, thank you for clarifying that. So, I want to wrap this up by saying, you know, to Commissioner Humberson's earlier comments about building an economy in $15 an hour. My issue that I've been saying over and over for years now is we are, the population is growing faster than we can grow jobs. And I'm not sure who builds an economy. But I don't think that we deliberately built an economy or can build an economy. Well, we can certainly do a lot of things to have jobs. But it doesn't matter if the, if whatever the minimum wage is, if you don't have a job, period, or you don't have a full-time job because we base that on 40 hours. But there's a lot of jobs out there that aren't 40 hours. So, I just wanted to, just state that, get clarification on the sewer. I'm actually, was inclined to support this today. I'm not sure how I'm going to, but I'll, I'll leave it there, I'll, I'll leave it there. But I do have a concern really about people having choice. And people have choice as far as where they live because really, a lot of people don't want to live. And then we're not going, this new site, in the Fuller Audi Road area is not the same as Oregon City, nor is it the same as downtown Portland or any other, but top, but, but it is a different, it is a different environment. One's got a freeway nearby, one doesn't. One's a very quiet area, one's not very quiet. So, I just want to, just, I'll just leave that there.
One has mass transit, one does not.
That's true, exactly.
So, Chair, if I may?
Yes.
So, one thing that I think has been lost in, with the article in our conversation, so this site became operational in 1962. The units really, I don't think were meant to go past the 90s in terms of occupancy. So, you know, HUD has a standard regarding maintenance. And, you know, the top of that standard is high performance. You're, you know, you're labeled a high performer. So, year in and year out, the maintenance staff of the Housing Authority have maintained Oregon City View Manor as a high performer relative to that standard with the, with housing and urban development. And I think that that has, you know, this article has cast a shadow on those efforts. And so, it is, it, the maintenance staff have made it possible for the continued occupancy of these units well past their expected life. And so, I just wanted to, you know, bring note to that and, you know, shine a light on that and thank the maintenance staff, the Housing Authority for those efforts. Because without it, we, you know, we would have been having this conversation a, a lot sooner.
Yeah, probably 40 years ago.
Yeah.
All right, and I want to thank everybody for the conversation. I think it's important that we have this and that citizens have an opportunity to hear the various opinions and, and I really appreciate that. So, with that, I'd entertain a motion.
Oh, Paul?
Motion we approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved and, uh, uh, seconded to approve the Housing Authority consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those, oh, Sonia?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the motion includes the giving authority to Chuck Robbins to adjust the application as necessary to achieve congressional approval.
Good with that? Paul? You, you made the motion, so you have to accept the amendment.
Oh, I accept that.
And.
I do.
All right.
Paul, comment?
I just want to comment, I, I'm going to, I think I'm going to abstain on this because I really want to know what the, what the residents of the Manor want to do or where they want to live. And I think, I think having a poll of what, where they want to be and what kind of environment they want to live in is important on this. So, I'll, I'll just abstain on this one for that simple reason.
I'll collect that information.
Thank you.
You know, the, the, I, I accept that you're going to abstain. But the problem is, is that if your house is falling down, you can't afford to maintain it and your renter wants to stay. It seems like, you know, this, you, you have to do something about it because you're at risk. There, the, this county is at risk.
Do we have any, any structures that are falling down? Because if they're at risk today, there's no solution that by our vote today, that they're going to be in any kind of remedy tomorrow, right? So.
I didn't say tomorrow, I just said in the future. This eight years, you said.
But if there's someone in Harvard, if there is a building we've got and they're in a dangerous situation, they're going to fall down, we're going to take care of it immediately.
Yes, that is correct. We don't have any unit that would, that would qualify, as I said, as Rich said, high performer status means we're maintaining all of the units at a high level.
All right, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
One abstention.
Okay, that's four with one abstention. Five.
Five.
Uh, five with one, huh? Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot. All right, with that, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Great conversation, appreciate you sticking around for it. All right, the next item is a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to invite Mr. Dylan Blaylock up to the dais.
I, I want to add that we're going to adjourn as the Housing Authority and reconvene at the Board of County Commissioners.
Yes. Okay, so we do have a video presentation this morning of Clackamas Community College, how they help veterans with small businesses. So, Dylan, go right ahead.
Thank you, County Administrator Krupp. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dylan Blaylock with Public and Government Affairs. I'd like to start off by wishing each of you and your families a safe and pleasant holiday tomorrow. I'm here today to talk about one way that the Board is helping its local veterans. As you know, through the Economic Opportunity Fund budget within our Business and Community Services Department, the Board approved a $10,000 grant to the Clackamas Community College Small Business Development Center, or the SBDC. That grant is providing veterans with scholarships to receive SBDC services. The center offers resources designed to help entrepreneurs and small businesses start, grow, and thrive. In a few minutes, we'll hear from Rob Campbell, who's the Director of the SBDC. But first, I want to share with all of you a video about the grant and the SBDC that our cable communications team put together and will be promoting very heavily over this holiday weekend.
Clackamas County is committed to assisting our local veterans. That's why our Commissioners recently gave the Clackamas Community College Small Business Development Center, SBDC, a $10,000 grant to provide veterans with scholarships to receive SBDC services. The SBDC offers resources designed to help entrepreneurs and small businesses start, grow, and thrive. The center also offers one-on-one business counseling.
So, my experience with the SBDC started in 2002. That program has taught me basically how to run a business. I knew the technical, I knew how to take care of customers, I knew many things about my business. But what I needed to learn is both the finances and the operations, human resources, you know, all the different aspects that you need to run your business.
So, we help them by counseling, doing business counseling in, in all sorts of different disciplines like finance, bookkeeping, marketing, areas like that. And then the classes we teach have a wide spectrum. They cover a wide range of areas from the very beginner business folks to more advanced business folks who've been in business for years. As an Army combat veteran myself, I am just so grateful and so thankful that the county is putting priority on veterans, on the women and men who have fought for their country and who are still fighting. For them to make that investment in veterans means a lot.
Seeing them as having an alternative to, you know, just getting a job when they come back from Iraq or wherever they served their time and giving them an opportunity to learn about how to become part of the 98% of businesses in Oregon that are small businesses and become an owner, you know, that was huge.
You, you sign up for service, you, you do your tour or tours, and then you have to transition back into civilian life. We want to make sure that our veterans are set up for success. The generosity of Clackamas County is really contributing to the success of our veterans, letting them know that they can do this, that they can learn how to run a business, that they can experience joy and wealth, whatever that means to them. And I just think it's an amazing program.
Again, this is just one of the many ways that we assist our local veterans. This particular grant also helps the county with one of its strategic priorities of grow a vibrant economy. And with that, I'd like to call up SBCD, I'm sorry, SBDC Director Rob Campbell to say a few words about the importance of the program and the grant.
Thank you, Dylan, Commissioner Bernard, County Commissioners. I'm happy to be here this morning to talk about veterans. I know all of you through my work at the Economic Development Commission. And today, I'm here to talk about my real job at Clackamas Community College. Just a brief overview of what the SBDC is, for people in the audience that don't know what we are. Congress in the 80s, through the Small Business Administration, started the SBDC network. There are 63 networks around the United States and in territories. And in Oregon, there's 19 SBDCs. 17 of us are actually affiliated with community colleges. And I brought some props for you, a couple. The one on the right is the evolution of our Small Business Management Program that actually originated with Dr. Thomas Jones in 1985. And we have morphed into a, a different program than what he originally started. But we actually use his program and I'll, and I'll talk about that. And then, and the poster that I have on the left is our guided pathways to joy and wealth. We serve about 1,200 clients a year at Clackamas SBDC. As you probably know, there's PCC, Mount Hood, and Clackamas. We all specialize in different areas. And our specialty, number one, is veterans. And we have a pathway for people that either want to start a business or if they have an existing business, how we improve that business and so they can actually hire more people. To explain why this is so important to us, I want to tell you my story. Back in 2010, I attended a small business fair at the convention center that was put on by the three SBDCs in, in the metropolitan area. And I attended that fair, not to attend the fair. I went down to meet up with the keynote speaker. His name was Alan Zell. And if you've been in Portland for a number of years, you probably knew about Zell Brothers. And Alan was one of the nephews and he'd worked there for like 35 years. And I'd known him for like 25 years when I was actually working for Northwest Natural Gas Company. And I got there early and I stepped into a breakout session. And there was a guy named Dr. Thomas Jones pontificating his small business management model. He earned his PhD over a 25-year period, worked with over 2,000 businesses, 600 startups with very few involuntary failures. And I was sitting in the audience and I've worked with small business all of my life. And actually, I was, I couldn't believe his numbers. So, I went up to him afterwards, introduced myself, and I said, I've got some issues about your numbers. And he said, no. And he explained his background and who he'd worked with. And quite honestly, I didn't even know that there was an SBDC network at that time. I didn't know Clackamas Community College had an SBDC network. So, anyway, the long and the short of it, he says, you wouldn't happen to be a vet, would you? And I said, I am a vet. And I said, I'm, I'm a Vietnam combat vet, I was in 101st Air. I was in 101st Airborne, I was in the 1st and 7th Cav." He says, "Well, I was in the 2nd and the 8th Cav." He said, "We just got a grant for $100,000 from the Small Business Administration to do a pilot on a small, a veteran's small business management program." And he said, "If you will attend, I will pay your $695 tuition. All you have to do is show up." And I, I'd listened to this, and I said, "Well, when is it?" And he says, "It's on Thursday night, 6:30 to 9:30." Well, I said, "I'm really not interested." And the reason I wasn't interested is because I didn't have a DVR at that time, and Glee was coming on, and I wanted to watch Glee. So. As most of this stuff, you fill out your name and your contact information. Within a couple of days, a Veterans Outreach Coordinator contacted me, and I, and I told that person that I wasn't interested in, in attending, even though it was free. They said, "Well, before you make a final decision, why don't you come to an orientation?" And I showed up at the Harmony Campus at the Health Sciences, um, building. You all know where it is. It's, it's right next to the new building they're building right now, and there was 100 people in there. And the long and the short of it, 62 of us took that class. And I found out that Thomas Jones was the real deal. And Tim Shea, a lot of you know Tim Shea, been the Director for over 20 years. He said, "Well, I have extra money, Campbell. Why don't you take our greenhouse program? It's an innovation program. It's, um, entrepreneurship. It's 16 weeks, three hours a week, and all you have to do is show up." And bottom line is, I did show up. And then, over time, they said, "Well, we're doing a veterans event, and we would like you to come and talk to us about your experience with your education experience at the SBDC, and we want you to talk to other vets." Because they're coming back from Iraq and Afghanistan, a lot of them coming back to a very punky economy. They, they don't have jobs, and a lot of them need to create their own job, and we have a program for that. So I started volunteering, and I was in the office one day, and Tim came up to me, and he says, "Well, I'm leaving." And I thought he was going on vacation. The guy had like six weeks of vacation. He says, "No, I'm gonna retire." He says, "I'm afraid that the per's, um, uh, accrual rates are gonna change, and so I've gotta retire." And I said, "Well, who's gonna teach a greenhouse class?" He says, "I think you should." So they hired me in the fall of 2011 to teach the greenhouse program. And then, um, the heir apparent decided not to, uh, proceed to, to replace Tim, and they opened it up, and I was fortunate enough to get that job in July of 2012. And I said, "If I get this job, my number one priority is gonna be veterans." And, um, and so it is a priority. And the reason it's so important is that Clackamas Community College is rated by the Military Times as the second highest rating to service to veterans of any community college in the United States. So we have veterans that, under the GI Bill, can take four credit classes, but Clackamas SBDC is the only SBDC in the state of Oregon that actually gives discounts to veterans to take non-credit classes, the stuff that the GI Bill does not cover. And the reason that your grant is so important to us, this allows us to actually give veterans that want to take, you know, the classes that we offer at a discounted rate to help them either start a business or, if they have an existing business, to grow and thrive. So, thank you. I appreciate it, and, uh, hopefully I'll come back and be able to give you an update on, uh, on, on this, on how we're gonna use your money.
Well, I, I took the greenhouse program when I graduated from college because, you know, I knew so much about business. At least after you graduate from college, you think you know everything. Uh, that program was very valuable. There are many people who went on very successful. Matter of fact, the guy who invented, uh, concentrated laundry detergent was in our class. And he wasn't there long because he sold his patent while he was in the class, but he was trying to figure out what to do about it, how to set up a business. And he got that in the first, you know, month or two and, and was gone and was very successful. And then landscaping firms and wineries and all kinds of people were just starting out. So it was very, very helpful for me, and I thought, you know, I, uh, when you're the third generation taking over a business, your chance of survival is slim.
Very slim.
Very slim. And I thought it was, it helped me get over those humps. I knew how to do spreadsheets and stuff like that, but when you get down to counting the money in the cash register and making sure you collect your bills, that's a totally different story. So you, for me, you guys were just a blessing, and, uh, and I'm happy, and I feel like, you know, we ought to look at more money, uh, because of, of the valuable work that you do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate your kind words.
Thank you.
As a side note, Martha got me involved in your One Stop Program a few years ago with Shelley Perini. And, uh, I handed out a, um, our, our commitment to that, um, the person of horticulture, uh, represented to the One Stop, what to grow and how to grow it. I said, "Well, you know, since we do the small business stuff, we'll take a look at it." And out of the 3,000 small farmer raiser growers in the county, 2,000 of them are 60 years old and older. So my commitment to Martha and the One Stop Program was to create some succession planning workshops, and I've got a little flyer up there. We're in the second version of that. We've got 23 families involved in that right now, so.
Yeah, that's a very complicated issue. I know a couple of people who are still working with that problem. Commissioner Schrader.
I think my sons need to take that course in particular, but I really want to thank you for all the work you do because I remember, I remember, I know Thomas, still hear from him, still hear from Tim Shea, and you were a perfect choice to move into that role. They were right on target, um, when, when you became the suc-, you know, the successor to, you know, to this. And what I remember most was Shelley and I going out to Camp Withacom because this was before we were just starting to explore this whole notion of, um, education and what we could do to help our veterans. And we literally went out there and kind of did a focus group together with, um, with the guys at, men and women at Withacom, our National Guard folks, and we asked them, "What exactly is it that you need?" And they said, "Well, we want the credits, we want the GI Bill, we want..." And so that kind of got the ball rolling. And of course, with Thomas there, um, and Shelley working together, it immediately kind of snowballed into this whole program. And, and I know at the time, the goal was to, to do what you just explained we have been successful doing, and that was to make Clackamas County one of the top community colleges in the country for veterans. And so thank you for that because from a little seed of a focus group to just knowing the right folks at the right time and just kind of, you know, just kind of seeing what the lay of the land is and, and, and figuring out what are some of the steps you can take, it's really blossomed into, I think, one of the best programs we have. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thanks for your service on the EDC, Economic Development Commission, too.
I've enjoyed that a lot.
Yeah. Well, you've been, been great, and like I said, it, it was, I left that day Withacom thinking we were on to something, and, um, I, we were all right.
Yeah.
Yay.
Hey, thank you. That's right.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, my remarks will be short and sweet. I want to say thank you to this Board for supporting that $10,000 scholarship when it was proposed, uh, and, and the continuing commitment to veterans' issues as a veteran myself and a rather lucky one, quite frankly. A lot of, a lot of guys that weren't so lucky and a lot of women that weren't so lucky have needed this help, and I really appreciate your support for that. And I want to thank Rob for all that he's doing for veterans, and, uh, hopefully we will continue to support that program. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
One more. Paul? I just want to echo everything that's been said. It's been great to work with you on EDC, and thank you for your efforts with the SBDC and also, again, on the EDC. So good to see you again and hope, have a great Thanksgiving.
You do the same, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia.
Next up is Citizen Communications, and huge crowd today, but I see why you have less pool. Welcome. Happy Thanksgiving.
Good morning. It's 11 o'clock. We just had a conversation or two that was very insightful from the other side of the, of the podium. This isn't a podium, but, um, as, as I came in and I saw him putting up the posters and I recognized him, I thought, "What, what a perfect example of efficiency and spending our money wisely." And I thought, "When he's done, I'm gonna compliment that and, and point out that, um, it just shows you that it's people that make the difference because there's so much waste and mismanagement going on." I, I cannot tell you that I'm so disappointed in our Governor and in DHS, I can't even begin to go there. The outrageous waste of money is just really on people's minds. And I see that. And, and that followed something earlier. That followed us sitting here, hearing that it takes forever to get anything through HUD, and that we don't have the money to adequately take care of an existing structure because HUD isn't giving it, because HUD has its direction. There isn't time for me to review all of that, but I will ask a question, and hopefully we'll get an answer. Why is an issue of that significance on the consent agenda? We just had a conversation that should have taken place in a discussion, a public discussion. Didn't happen. And I think that's why a lot of the questions came about. Other things on my mind, yes, it's Thanksgiving, and, you know, I thought, "Don't get up there and tell everybody to drive careful and be safe because it's just something, sounds like you're just saying it." And of course, right out here at Malala Avenue, as I drove up, there's, the cars crashed into each other. So I will say it, folks, please be careful out there. It's slick, it's dark, uh, we're gonna have record rain on Thanksgiving, so let's all enjoy the time and be patient. Grandma's not gonna get mad if you don't get there on time. Last thing is that we're hearing about tolling, we're hearing about congestion, tolling is an option for the freeways. There's a lot of angst about a $5.2 billion transportation bill that was passed, and at the last minute, taking care of, accommodating I-205 didn't happen. Regardless of anyone's feelings about the economy and where we are, that is unacceptable. I don't blame the county, I think the county got hosed. Some people might use another word. Doesn't matter. The citizens got hosed on that deal because we're spending too much money elsewhere. ODOT is a bloated bureaucracy. And our freeway is backed up, our commerce is stopped. And we've got to really get after that. And I appreciate the, the comments that have been made recently about that. And I know we've got a vehicle, a vehicle registration fee you're considering, and, and we'd like to hear something about where are we at with that? Will, will there be a vote on it if that were to take place? And how are we gonna maintain what we have? So I've given you a mixed message today because I have mixed feelings, and I appreciate everyone listening to me. Um, one of the most thankful things I have is the ability that anyone else has, and that's to come down here, not get all intimidated, and tell people what you really think. And, oh, closing note, I almost forgot to thank Carol Polly for filing to run for Metro. She's former Oregon City Commissioner, she's a real reasonable gal, and, and, uh, I, I think she'd be a, a pleasant addition, um, and that gets me off the hook. You can only imagine me running for Metro. Thank you, folks.
All right, thanks. All right, with that, we have a series of public hearings.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the first, uh, two public hearings, uh, for this morning involve boundary change proposals. I'm going to invite, uh, Mr. Ken Martin, our Boundary Change Consultant, up to the dais. The, uh, first public hearing involves a board order for a Boundary Change Proposal Number CL-17-016, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is your standard boundary process. I will note again that you are sitting as the Board of County Commissioners and considering this as the Boundary Commission or Boundary Authority. You are not sitting as the governing body of CCSD-1, although you also wear that hat from time to time. Uh, this is a proposal that CCSD-1 has received and processed through Ken Martin, our excellent and always available Boundary Consultant, who is here to share with you the facts of the petition.
This is a, uh, one-lot annexation. It's an existing dwelling, they need sewer service. The district through its compact with the other districts and west has the service available in the street, and we'd recommend approval.
Okay, um, so I want to ask a question, uh, it's kind of a general question. If at some point somebody asks for an annexation that, uh, might concern us, for example, cherry stem, just to get to a piece of property up in a community, would you let us know? Or can we just request that you let us know, one of you guys let us know that this is occurring and that it might be detrimental? I mean, something that we might be concerned about?
You can certainly ask us to flag those items for you. I will note, uh, the staff report actually outlines the criteria that you have as the Boundary Commission in evaluating the petitions for annexation. It's actually somewhat prescribed by statute, the, the factors that you can consider in looking at that, that, um, there may be a way that that can roll in there because it's mainly around land use and comprehensive services and ensuring that it's an effective service. If someone is, uh, extending quite a ways out, that could have an impact. I will note that typically cherry stemming is related to cities, and you, uh, don't deal with annexations to cities, you're the Boundary Authority for annexations to districts, and districts do not have to be contiguous. So you may not see the same factors popping up in the same way.
Right.
It's more availability of service.
All right, thanks. So I'm not gonna worry about it anymore. All right, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Quick question?
Yes.
Just a procedural question. Uh, is it possible to take these on block? In one block, it's eight separate ones? Or does it have to be done individually for each and every one?
Oh, you're looking at the lighting one, which we are doing in one.
Excuse me, yeah. Oh, I was, I was ahead. Excuse me.
So Chair, uh, I move.
Can we take even the two as a block or not?
They're a little bit different. I would suggest keeping them separate.
Okay. Because we're wearing different hats, right?
Well, they're, they're different actions.
Okay, they are.
Different criteria.
Okay. So with that, Chair, if you'd like a motion?
Please.
Oh, yes, we should do the process, shouldn't we?
That's why.
Uh, do any Commissioners have any clarifying questions? Uh, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. We'll close, uh, since no one appeared, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Uh, Chair, I move we approve the board order for Boundary Change Proposal, uh, CL-17-016, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
They moved and seconded that, we approve a board order for Boundary Change Proposal Number CL-17-016, Annexation to Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing done, motion carries unanimously. What's the next item, sir?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is also a public hearing to consider a board order. This would be for a Boundary Change Proposal Number CL-17-017, Proposed Withdrawal from Clackamas County Service District Number One. And again, we have Mr. Story and Mr. Martin here to address this matter for you.
Uh, we are flagging this one a little bit differently because it is a withdrawal, which you don't see as often as you see annexations. This is an outgrowth of the conversation around the consolidation of the Oak Lodge Sanitary District and the Oak Lodge Water District. When the two districts merged, as we considered their boundary action, which you reviewed as the Boundary Commission, one of the requirements was, in areas where the Water District, which had slightly larger boundaries, overlapped with CCSD Number One, that it would not annex those areas in for sewer service because that would be changing the boundary of CCSD-1 wholesale. We rather wanted to approach it on a parcel-by-parcell basis to ensure that the best service was being provided to those customers. So when the new district in Oak Lodge was formed, uh, the annexation ensured that those areas stayed within CCSD-1. Subsequently, this parcel has come forward, the parties, both sewer districts have talked and said that the best service would be provided through Oak Lodge. So, uh, they have requested annexation, CCSD-1 has consented to withdrawal, um, and this is the first of a two-part process. The first would be withdrawal, the second will be annexation into Oak Lodge.
Okay, any clarifying questions?
And Mr. Martin can give you details about the particular parcel if you're interested, certainly.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I would note that, uh, this is a two-part hearing process. That is, the withdrawal proceeding requires that we hold two hearings. So if you approve going forward today, there would be a second hearing, which we would propose on December 14th to complete the process, and then subsequent to that, we'll get the annexation to Oak Lodge.
It's subject, subs-, uh, subject to remonstrance. It's subject, subject to remonstrance. There we go.
All right. Okay, any clarifying questions? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move to approve board order, or, or boundary change proposal number CL-17-017, proposed withdrawal from Clackamas County Service District Number One.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve a board order for boundary change proposal number CL-17-017, proposed withdrawal from Clackamas County Service District Number One. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. By the way, I had a question, at, at County College, did they ask you to read, that you should read the motion completely?
They did not comment on that.
Oh, because they did when we did it, when I did it. Anyway, thank you very much, appreciate it. Next up, we are going to announce that the board will adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as Service District Number Five for the next nine public hearings.
And I will note, if I may, Mr. Chairman, ask that question. Can these nine be taken in one vote?
It is actually proposed on the-
To do just that.
Good. Yes, thank you.
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, of course, these are nine matters before you, board orders that would form assessment areas to incorporate these properties into the Service District Number Five involving street lighting services. And we have Wendy Coriel, who's the manager for our street lighting utility, here to present these items for you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Wendy Coriel, with Clackamas County Service District Number Five. We're the district responsible for street lighting in the unincorporated areas of Clackamas County and in the cities of Happy Valley. Street lighting is required as conditions of approval for all new residential, commercial, industrial, multi-family developments in the urban area of Clackamas County and the city of Happy Valley. Today, there are nine street lighting service areas for your consideration. Six are in the unincorporated area of Clackamas County, and three are in the city of Happy Valley. The first three areas for your consideration are Area 03-16, which is a 10-unit apartment building on southeast Rupert Drive. Next area is 33-17, which is a retail bank with two tenant spaces, which will be located on southeast Sunnyside Road. And then 41-17, which is congregate housing, which will be on southeast Tolbert Street. And these will be Cobra lights on wood or either fiberglass poles. These will come under Rate D for commercial at $1.25 per frontage foot per tax lot each year. Next area for your consideration is Area 39-16. It's a three-lot partition on Lamphurst Street. We have Cobra lights on wood poles, and this will come at a Rate B at $50.01 per tax lot each year. Next three areas for your consideration are 27-16, which is a Hidden Falls 302-lot subdivision near Sunnyside Road and 162nd Avenue. And then 0517, which is King's Landing 21-lot subdivision on southeast King Road. And 14-17, which is a two-lot partition that's located on Eastbourne Lane. And these three are in Happy Valley. We'll be installing Westbrook decorative lights and poles. And these will come at a Rate W at $245 per tax lot each year. And then the last two areas for your consideration are 42-17, which is Deer Ridge Estates, is a nine-lot subdivision on Medina Way. And then 39-17, which is a three-lot partition at 4,500 southeast Manuel Lane. These will have Cobra lights on fiberglass poles. These will come at a Rate C at $70.12 per tax lot each year. And with that, there's no remonstrances that have been received on any of these. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions of the presenters? You want to actually see more pictures of lights?
I'm just, just glad that we don't have streetlights where I live.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Huge crowd today. With that, no one's here to testify on this matter, so we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
It would brighten my day if I could make the motion.
It would have brightened mine, too, Paul.
I move we approve the board orders forming the nine assessment areas within Clackamas County Service District Number Five as presented today.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve the board order forming the nine assessment areas within Clackamas County Service District Number Five as presented today. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. It was a tough decision, but it was unanimous. Thank you.
Wendy has one more thing.
Yeah, with your permission, just a quick update, I like to give at this time of year, is to just give a public service announcement to let people know that if they have lights that are out or on all day, that they notice, they can call in to the Service District. It's on the screen here, to call, email, and take the poll and map number off of the poll, which is about eye level on each poll, and report it, and we'll get those serviced for you. Usually, service takes about, I don't know, seven days to upwards of a month. But if they can call in and give that, that would be appreciated.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, I'll announce that the board will adjourn as the Clackamas County Service District Number Five, and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the event, the event, this meeting.
You're mixing it up.
So, let's see, please read the consent agenda by title only.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an agency service contract with LifeWorks Northwest for supported employment services for uninsured and ingénit Clackamas County residents. Approval of construction contract change order number two with Jim Smith, excavation for the Addy Street Improvement Project in Gladstone. Approval of amendment, of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services, Senior Health Insurance Benefits Assistance. Under Department of Transportation Development, approval of a board order adopting local delivery only on Morgan Road. Under Finance, approval of a resolution authorizing refunding of the county's full faith credit obligation, Series 2007 and Series 2009. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under our Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon acting by and through its Oregon Department of Education Youth Development Division for the juvenile crime prevention funding. Under Community Corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation for the Bus-Pass Program. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community College and Clackamas, no, Clackamas County Community Corrections and Clackamas County Community College to provide GED instructional services. And approval of a, of the Justice Reinvestment Grant Agreement, JR-17003, with the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for the Clackamas County Community Corrections Program. Under County Council, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas River Water related to deferral of system development charges for 115th Street property. And also declaring a local state of emergency and declaring emergency measures to address landslide issues on Dickey Prairie Road. Under the Development Agency, approval of a disposition agreement with Oregon Beverage Recycling Cooperative. And underwater environment services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Water Environment Services and Clean Water Services for liquid biosolid management. Approval of the Goods and Services Contract between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Valley Landfield, doing business as Republic Services for biosolids and grit disposal. Approval of a Goods and Services Contract between Water Environment Services and Valley Landfield, doing business as Republic Services for biosolids and grit disposal. Approval of the Goods and Services Contract between Polydine Inc. and Water Environment Services for thickening and de-watering Palmer? Ew. And approval of the Goods and Services Contract between Polydine Inc. and Clackamas County Service District Number One for thickening and de-watering Palmer. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Wow. Do any Commissioners wish to move the item from the consent agenda?
Yeah, each, each one of them.
Don't want to remove anything, I just wanted to make three comments on the consent agenda, if I may, Mr. Chairman. One is, I'd like to commend Mark Gonzalez, our Finance Director, and his team for the savings of $4.5 million by the refunding of our indebtedness. I thought that was very good on his part, and paying attention to that saves us some money. On the item regarding a pre-trial program, I just want to be certain that we get violation information for those clients that might violate this, the, the tenants of this program, so we can determine the efficacy of the program. And last, I'd like to say thank you to Clackamas River Water District for stepping up and supporting our Veterans Homeless Shelter Program by not having the, the SDC's collectible at this time. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Great. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved in second, approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? I wanted to pull one item before Dan left, but I guess I won't.
We can hold them there at the door. I think we can hold them there at the door.
Yeah.
Delay the vote.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass five, zero. Thank you. And with that, County Administrator updates.
So I really just have one item to share with you, and that is to let you know that two Saturdays ago, we held this year's second and final Flood of Information Workshop. It was held in Milwaukee. It was a free event that we provide for county residents who are interested in learning more about how they can prepare for flooding in their community. And we had set up a number of booths that are staffed by many of our partner organizations that would include the North Clackamas Urban Watershed Council, and the Wetlands Conservancy, Greater Oregon City Watershed Council, and the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, along with the Red Cross. So this event followed a September workshop we held in Sandy, and I just wanted to express thanks to our partner organization and the staff of our Disaster Management and Water Environment Services Departments, along with the other departments that helped make this a success. And so with that, I do want to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving holiday, and I want to express my thanks to the wonderful team we have here at Thurston County doing really great things.
Thurston County?
Did I say Thurston County?
Yeah, you did.
Oh, good grief.
I think you did that on purpose.
Yeah, you did. You're just, you're listening.
Okay, let me back up a minute. We do the real, four years. Yeah, see, my-
We do listen to you, Administrator Crap.
Okay, yeah. So, thank you to the wonderful team we have here at Clackamas County, who've been doing such a great job serving the citizens here in the county, making sure that they have the things they need from their county government. And I'm very, very grateful for that, and very, very thankful for that. Thank you.
Great. So Commissioner Communications, and I'd like you to add something that Mary suggested, something you're thankful for. And first up, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There, you're thankful for that.
I think I will start with, with what I'm thankful for. First and foremost, in the family situation, to have a, a wife who has stood by me no matter what, and with incredible patience, for 48 years, I am very thankful. And to have two healthy kids and four healthy grandchildren, and that see that they are successful in their lives is, is a blessing, and consider myself a very lucky person. Secondly, here professionally, I would like to say that I'm very thankful for the support I get from the staff here. Particularly, I'd like to make a point of thanking Kimberly DeSantis, my policy coordinator, who, quite frankly, without her, I don't know how I would do this job. She is an extraordinary employee and does an excellent job, and I'm very much appreciative of that.
Excellent.
Moving on from there, we attended the AOC Conference last week, where I spent the bulk of my time doing networking on behalf of the issues of cross-laminated timber. And since we talked about this yesterday, I will not belabor it, but I would, for the record, make the point that this is a project that has the potential of providing 6,000 direct jobs and over 17,000 indirect jobs throughout Oregon. And with Clackamas County trying to take the lead on this, I think that this is going to be beneficial to our community. And yesterday, we took the tour of 19 folks, including some of our environmental folks, down to D.R. Johnson to see the cross-laminated timber production facility that they have down there. And that tour was very well received. My last comment is, I know sometimes people wonder why government moves so slow, but let us remember that government's mission doesn't just include doing things, but it also includes providing access to all who wish to speak and have their voices heard. And that, by definition, is going to slow down the process. But in a democracy, all voices should be heard, and it's our job to make sure that that happens. Lastly, if I can find it here. Ah, it's right in front of me. It's time for the dog. And this is Keo. He is a lab bloodhound mix and is ready for a home. He offers a gentle tail wag when visitors come to see him and will give you his full attention. This five-year-old dog does still get excited and jumps up on people, so he will need children in his home to be over 13 years old. Keo enjoys chasing things, so he will need a home with no cats. His favorite toy is a ball and a rope. The bloodhound in him means he has an excellent nose to sniff out all kinds of things, and the lab in him means loyalty, affection, and patience. Keo's new owner will give him time to adjust to his new environment and be there for the long run. Obedience training together can help develop a great working partnership. Please stop by and visit Keo today. For more information about Keo and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And Commissioner Schrader?
Well, again, we want to start with what we're thankful for, and I'm thankful for my daughter Claire, my daughter Maren, my sons, Steve and RJ and Travis, and my, my daughter Jenny, who just got married the other day. I finally realized I not just have five kids, I have six or more, because she, I'm thankful she got married. She's had, she had a rough start. Many of you know she stayed with me while her little boy was ill. He has since passed away, and was very tragic for her. And I'm very thankful and grateful that she has restarted her life, found a wonderful young gentleman, and I think is on the way to a lot of healing in her life. And so I'm thankful also for my grandchildren, Jasper, Harper, and Travis's little boy, Braxton. He's a real little sweetie. They're all five and under, and they are the joy of my life. I wish Jasper and Harper were a little closer, but I'll get a chance to see them, I hope, over New Year's. I'm also thankful that I have a home. And that I have a home that's warm and snug, and that I can welcome people into, because I'm one of the lucky folks, I think, in this world. Because when you have a warm, snug home, is when you have the gift of time in order to really participate in society. So very, very grateful for that. On that note, I just wanted to end talking a little bit about housing again. At the Association of Oregon Counties, we had the opportunity to hear Representative Alyssa Kenny-Geyer speak. She is the Chair of the Human Services and Housing Committee. And we've talked very deliberately with her about what, some of the initiatives that are going to be moving forward to help us with the housing crisis at the state legislative level. We also had Kim Travis, who works for Oregon Housing and Community Services. She's pretty important, because she's been traveling the state, going to all areas, really identifying and, and writing down and codifying what the housing situations are, not just in our county, but counties across the state. And we think that is going to give us a real snapshot to help reframe and co-generate housing policies at the level of Oregon Housing and Community Services Departments. I want to thank her for that, she's great. Finally, working with LeAnn Thompson. We mentioned cross-laminated timber at the housing conference as a material that we would like to see used in the future, should we pursue things like, you know, smaller, you know, smaller homes and ADUs and things of that sort. And- And the other piece of this is that Greg Wolfe, who is our Community County Solutions Person from the Association of Oregon Counties, has proposed a project with the League of Oregon Cities that will offer technical assistance across the state to all of our counties and our cities, so we can address the housing crisis in the most effective way possible. And we're very hopeful that Mount Margaret Salazar, the Head of Oregon Community and Housing Services, seems to be interested in this idea, and we're going to continue to work to push that, push that forward. Also, Ken and I actually had a conversation as well last week with, let's see, it was Representative Ken Heim and Representative David Brock Smith, talking about how we can, how can we move cross-laminated timber into the larger discussion of CAP and INVEST because of its environmental opportunities. So, it's been a busy week. I'm also going to say I'm very grateful for my health. And I'm going to advise anybody out there who will listen to me to get a shingles vaccine, because I'm learning firsthand, that's going to be a part, real important part of your health as you get older here. So, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some reflections overall, thankful for family and the ability to serve. I, first of October, I was able to go and greet a new grandson into the world. And I said to my daughter, just whatever you need, I'm here to serve. And in between our sessions, policy sessions, and board meetings, I was able to do a lot of dishes, a lot of laundry. I cooked some meals that my daughter put on the agenda. It was a lot of housework. I was so exhausted by the end of the day that I actually had one moment of thinking, am I going to recover? Oh, my gosh, how do we ever do all of this, this work? But so thankful to serve, so thankful to serve in the sense of our future generations and for our children and our grandchildren, because that's really why we do the work that we do in helping us to move forward and to leave, leave this place better than where we found it. And that is not an easy charge at all. I also have been spending a lot of time with community groups. As I get out there and I'm really focusing on what do our constituents, what do our residents need, I am thankful for the hard conversations. I'm thankful for the challenges. I'm thankful for the frustration, for the ability for our residents to share with us and to say, let us know how they feel, because there lies the opportunity to create solutions and success. And sometimes they're hard conversations, but I'm so thankful for the opportunity to serve. And with that, I wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas?
Well, on Monday, had our first regional tolling discussion convened by ODOT, the State of Oregon, and it was also co-chaired by two members of the Oregon Transportation Commission, who happened to be appointed by the governor. Got a better idea of what that's going to look like. And there's, I know there's a lot of media, a lot of questions. It comes up almost everywhere I go. I hear people are concerned about tolling. And it looks like the only highways that will be considered for tolling at this point in the scope is I-205, Interstate 5. We have, do have Washington State at the table. They have a couple seats. So, they'll be, we have a city council seat. We have a, actually, three seats. We have a county commission seat for Clark County and a Washington Department of Transportation seat. So, they'll be inputting this process. I think from what I've heard from our commission, and I want to thank my commissioners, I think we're all in alignment from what we've heard so far, that I think we want to see value out of this. Value in the sense that if people, if, key word here, if tolling is imposed by the state in this region, that those dollars go towards a capital investment to relieve some of the congestion out there and improve traffic flow throughput specifically. And also, support that it's, it's, there's a voluntary aspect of this, meaning that you're not mandated to get on the, when you get on the freeway to pay, that you actually have an express lane. I think those are two common principles that we are guiding forward. So, I want to thank my colleagues for supporting that. If, again, the state imposes this, this committee will not be making the decision. The committee will be, at best, making a recommendation for the OTC to consider. The work will be done in, by summer, and then the OTC will take several months to actually take all that data, information, and then refine what that is. So, I, that part's not very clear, but I'll be keeping you all informed as each meeting happens. The next meeting will be December 7th, which is just around the corner. Martha passes on to me, so I'm going to read this before I go into what I'm thankful for. So, the Arts and Culture Activities in the county. I know Mary's going to get that up on the board, or the screen, thank you. Penny's Puppets presents the Gingerbread Man. This family-focused event is a great way to recover from your coma. Drink a mimosa and laugh with your kids. Granny gets lonely and decides to make a gingerbread man from a magic cookie recipe. But oops, she leaves them in the oven too long, and the adventure begins. That's why we have a fire department, I think. On Friday, November 24th, 10:30 a.m., at the Chapel Theater, Milwaukee Holiday Artisan Fair, support local professional artists and get ahead of your holiday gift list. Food and wine are available. A special discounted room rate will be offered for those who wish to stay the night. And on Saturday, November 25th, 10 a.m. to 6 p.m., at the Resort at the Mountain in Welch's. Oh, that's, that's a continuation of the same thing. Oh, I see what I did wrong here. I'm sorry. So, the Holiday Artisan Fair is in, on the mountain, and the Penny's Puppets is at the Chapel Theater, Milwaukee.
Okay, I was wondering where the hotel was in Milwaukee.
Yeah, exactly.
I was going to ask.
So, that's why Martha reads these. She's familiar how they, how they work. I just want to, just, as I do every year, and I do this with, actually, it's the first thing that comes to mind when I think about what I'm thankful for. And I, you know, thankful for the position of being a county commissioner. I'm thankful for my family. I'm thankful for the great staff we have here at the county. Our department, heads of our departments, our county staff, policy coordinators, the administration do a great job here. But I always give the shout-out to the people that are volunteers, that mean really a lot to make this county what, such a great county that it is. And I think one of the greatest learned experiences I have, and again, I'm thankful for, is, is all those volunteers. And especially on Thanksgiving or in the holidays, people out there that'll be feeding people, feeding the hungry, that go out there on a annual, month to month, all the time, you know, whether they're participating in volunteering to the food bank or the Clackamas Service Center and all these nonprofits to help the people that are homeless or hungry that need shelter. So, it really makes things easier. I was watching a news article on TV the other night, and it said that there, this year, there's an overabundance of volunteers, and they're actually somewhat discouraging people from just showing up and calling ahead, because they have more volunteers than they have, you know, things to do. But they really ask a lot of people, they can, to actually, if they can afford it, to maybe donate money where they can to a cause or a local nonprofit that feeds the hungry or whatnot, or whatever interests them, but that this year, the donations would be appreciated. And by all means, do check in to see if they need volunteer help, if you're inclined. But they do have an overabundance of that. Always, in the holidays, who really touches my heart are the people that, while we're sometimes in our warm, snug homes with our families on Thanksgiving, is that we have sometimes people who get in trouble on the mountains or in the rivers, and our search and rescue folks are out there sacrificing their days, their evenings, and their special time with their family on behalf of trying to rescue people in harm's way. So, a special shout-out to our search and rescue folks that volunteer their time, their own money, to gas up their vehicles and go out there and spend all those times out there in the harshest of weather conditions. And thank you, and have everyone have a nice and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all you commissioners, because I think we're one of the best teams I've worked with in my 16 years in politics. Because we get things done, and we have great discussions and get to a conclusion that I think really opens my eyes and should open the citizens' eyes to the issues that they should actually get involved in. So, take the time and learn about your county. We had a graduating class the other night at a meeting, and, you know, the services we provide for mental health are outstanding. And that's, many of those folks who took that class mentioned that. And of course, my wife, my family, I'm very thankful for them and for the staff that helps me and all of us get things done that couldn't be done. I mean, this little item right here, I could not survive without the calendaring that Mary, Joe, and other staff provide. But I think it's also important that when you go home, you often hear, well, I never thought this would happen. I never thought this person would do that. But we had a presentation the other day on opioids. And you should, you should also consider talking to your family about addiction, opioid addiction. Thirty-eight thousand people die in car accidents every year. More people die in opioid overdose. We spend billions of dollars trying to help these people, but the best help they can get is recognition from their family member that there's a problem and they'd like to help. So, when you're at home, talk to your family and make sure they're okay. This is, we're about to enter a season that depression is probably at its highest level. And reach out and make sure they know you love them and you care. So, with that, you know, I, I've got to be, when I sit here, I'm amazed that I'm here at all. You know, when I was graduating from high school, I had no idea what I was going to do. But thanks to my father, my mother, I decided to get involved in the community. And I took a leadership program at the Chamber and came here. I was already the mayor, because my dad always said, give back to your community. Being a mayor's a volunteer job, so I gave back. But I also learned the great work we do at the county. It's amazing. And so, look at your county, learn about it, and see what we do and how we can help you or how you can help us. Because those volunteers, you mentioned 70 advisory groups, plus all the people who work at, like, Milwaukee Center, the Meals on Wheels, and all around the county, and the people that make your road safe. It's just amazing. So, I'm here today because my father and mother said, give back to the community. And I think if you look at our goals, you'll see that that's exactly what we're trying to do. When Les Poole mentioned there's a lot of waste of money at the state level, we, we try to spend every penny to help our citizens have a better life. And so, and I think we're, we're, we're successful, but we, we need to, like what we talked about earlier, we need to do something different, because everyone in this country is trying to resolve affordable housing issues. They're trying to address that concern, and they're not being successful. There are some that are. At least, they're, they're making a dent. So, we need to really look at innovative ideas that might turn the county around. I, I actually am totally positive that before I leave here, we will have made a big dent. Before any of us leave here, we will have made a big dent. And that's all, I know that's all our goals. So, with that, happy Thanksgiving and be safe.